382 Lot 3 to Fillmore Place in the Fillmore Place Historic District. A vacant lot, this is an application to construct a new building.
Good morning Commissioners, Hillary Page, Preservation Councilwoman. Yes, okay. This property is located within Fillmore Place Historic District in the southwest corner of Fillmore Place and Driggs Avenue. Current photograph taken on Driggs Avenue. It shows the vacant lot within the context of Driggs Avenue and a red dash line denotes the extent of the historic district. Current photographs taken along Fillmore Place show the vacant lot in its context on the block. So it's in this end of the block of Fillmore Place. And then 1940s tax photograph, there. Shows the mixed-use corner building that originally occupied the site but was demolished prior to designation. Current photo taken from the intersection of Fillmore Place and Driggs Avenue shows the extent of the property. The applicant is proposing to construct a new school building on this corner site and the design team is here to present the application.
Good morning Commissioners, my name is Martin Vino from Kristoff Vino Architecture. I'm here with my partner Karen Kristoff, owner's rep Brian Butterfield, director of the school, Kim Turnbull, and Richard Lobel, who's the lawyer filing for the BSA variance that we're asking for. So I think what I'll do is have Richard speak first just to set the terms for the variance that we're in the middle of filing for and then I'll come and present the project property.
Good morning, Richard Lobel from Sheldon Lobel PC presenting for the proposed school at Fillmore Place. I'm Chair, a pleasure appearing in front of you in this venue. Very briefly, the project team wanted me to just discuss the fact that we are before BSA, we've filed variance at BSA, and we are also here at LaMarcus obviously for approval due to the historic district. The BSA variance very simply is based on the fact that this is a very unique lot. It is approximately 21 feet by 75 to 77 feet, making it approximately 1,600, 1,700 square feet. So the lot in the area is exceedingly small. We did a study as we do in many BSA applications with regards to the area of the lot. We fall within, there are surrounding 600 lots, we fall within the smallest 38 lots. Of those lots, about 17 are in the historic district themselves, meaning that redevelopment of buildings there is unlikely. And of those 21 lots where development would be possible, approximately 13 of those lots are development buildings which use 80% or more of their FARs. So really, we're dealing with a very small universe of developable lots. And so we have to Fillmore Place, the lot itself would again be devoted to a school and the project, I mean program can be discussed by the team members, but the school would house approximately 77 students. And the reliance on the variance here is for two waivers. We're seeking floor area and we're seeking wall height. The floor area here, we're seeking something akin to 2.8, 2.9, which is above the 2 that is permitted as a right. And the reason we're doing that is essentially because we have such a small lot, the idea of developing this with a conforming building, in particular a conforming school, would result in a school that could only hold 47 kids. We are attempting to make every effort to comply with the New York Health Code which requires approximately 30 feet, 30 square feet per child here. And so when you put in all of the administrators, teachers and such, the slight variances we're asking here enable us to go from a building which can house 47 kids to one which can house 77 children. So this square footage here is really important for the goals of the school and make this a feasible school. The other waiver we're asking for is for wall height. The wall height is exceeding the permitted wall height by a small amount, 2 feet 1 inch or less, 2 feet and a half an inch I'm told. And the really direct reason for that waiver is because the Health Code, Section 47-47, requires us to have a certain height of enclosure if you want to have a rooftop play yard for kids. So it's really that direct program need to have some outdoor space which is causing that overage. And I close with subject any questions from the Chair of Commissioners with the fact that we are at BSA, this is a variance application, and we do benefit from the case law of the City of New York as well as the board precedent relating to schools. The courts have made clear in the Cornell decision as well as subsequent decisions including the decision of Dwight School, which was a case that went through BSA to the Health Division, that the for-profit or nonprofit nature of a school is not determinative whether or not they are meritorious or are meriting a variance, granted a variance. So again, that's basically the procedural aspect of BSA and we have to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Thank you.
Thanks again Commissioners, I may repeat small degrees of this information but I think in the end it will all make sense. Receiving your certificate of appropriateness for a new preschools story school in the Fillmore Place Historic District. The historic district is in Williamsburg and it is a very small district. It's basically one block long, Fillmore Place, the street is one block long between Driggs Avenue and Roebling Street. Metropolitan is on one other side and Graham here, but the historic block is basically the lining Fillmore Place. It consists of about 29 properties built over about a 20-year period between the 1850s and the 1870s. And it was started by a couple of merchant tailors who wanted to try their hand at developing. So they started to buy up these contiguous properties on a very large block in the center of town in the late 1840s and early 1850s. It was a very wide block, so, and it was over 300 feet long I believe, so they hired a surveyor to create, basically to split the block in two and create the street we know today as Fillmore Place and to also create the properties that then face it. Williamsburg was largely farmland up until about the 1820s and it was after that point that the population there really began to rapidly grow. The Village of Williamsburg, I have it on. The Village of Williamsburg was chartered in 1827. It became a town in 1840, a city in 1852, and then it finally consolidated with the City of Brooklyn in 1855, at which point it became the neighborhood of Williamsburg. Its most famous resident, as many of you may already know, is the author Henry Miller who lived at 662 Driggs from the period of 1891 to 1899, when he basically, he moved when he was about nine years old. And as you all probably know too, that he often wrote about the neighborhoods that he grew up in as a child. And in Prophecy of Capricorn, he spoke specifically of Fillmore Place and he writes, "It was the most enchanting street I had ever seen in all my life. It was the ideal street for a boy, a lover, a maniac, a drunkard, a crook, a lecher, a thug, an astronomer, a musician, a poet, a tailor, a shoemaker, politician." He left out architect, but I'm sure it was an oversight. Here is our property in red. It's at the corner of Driggs and Fillmore Place and I want you to note that it is a corner building and one of basically three that exists on the property. And you'll see as I move on here that it has very, very different characteristics than from its mid-block neighbors. Here are the boundaries as Hillary showed you, looking from Driggs into Fillmore Place. And here is our site within that. So this is Fillmore the street and this is our empty lot. Fillmore Place is not the most intact historical district. Every property has been altered in some way. Many of them, much more so than others in fact. 18 Fillmore and 16 Fillmore are great examples of these restrained Italianate style of the block. The Historic Designation Report describes the characteristics of the block as plainer and austere. But several properties within the district are not of that historic era. 7 Fillmore Place was built in 1912, 9 Fillmore Place in 1934. 13 Fillmore was built in the 1850s but it's been sort of altered beyond recognition given its flow of stone face. 15 Fillmore has been stripped of all of its historic detail. 12 Fillmore, excuse me, 12 Fillmore has had the cornice removed, the entry door, the stoop and the past iron metal railing have all been replaced, as have the windows, which I think is true for all of the windows on this block. And the same so on with 22 and 30 Fillmore Place. So we would describe the district as having a bit of a kind of scrappy character. So here are the north and south elevations of Fillmore Place, the street, and as Hillary showed you, this is our property, the vacant lot on the west end of, or should say southwest end of Fillmore. But it's interesting to look, let me go back one second, the north side of the street, most of those properties were developed by individual property owners. But it is interesting to look at the south side of the block because it figures strongly in the way that we came up with our massing strategy for the building. This block was developed from the mid-block outwards. The same original developers, Miller and Klop, hired a builder to build the nine middle buildings at the same time and again with the same builder. That was in the 1850s. And it wasn't until some 20 years later that these two sort of bookend buildings happened But I want you to notice now the building at the other end of the block, 168 Roebling. It is also an end-block building, similar to ours, and it has an interesting sort of history. In 1913, Roebling Street was widened. So this is the original position of the building on the block. And then it was moved back, again, the Historic Designation Report, I'm quoting, "The structure appears to have been moved 20 feet to the west, eliminating the rear yard and one-story building that once stood at 32 Fillmore Place." So it's really important to understand that property relative to ours. They have very different characteristics than the mid-block buildings. They don't have raised basements, so therefore they don't have the airways, the stoops and everything else that goes, that you see with the fabric along the mid-block of the building. They were designed to face their respective avenues and they have a very, very different presence and a much, much more sort of plainer facade on the Fillmore Place, an unbroken face on Fillmore Place. So here's the only archival photograph that we know to be in existence of the building that was on our block. Now I should say that our lot has sat empty for over 40 years now. It's not been a building on the site for over 40 years. As you can see, or maybe you can't see, it is known at this point as the Minerva Toy Company. If you don't know when this photograph was taken, but we also believe that in a former life, this building was a saloon. And we know this basically by going back to our friend Henry Miller. In October, on October 17th, 1971, The New York Times published a memoir by Henry Miller called "A Voice of You of the 90s," that's the 1890s. And he talks about remembering a saloon being sort of diagonally across Driggs from his home. And he writes, "I remember the saloon because as a child, I was often sent to get a pitcher of beer at the side entrance. We called this rushing the growler." So unlike the mid-block neighbors of this building, you can see this is a four-story building, all the others are three stories. And from the cornice locations in this photograph, you can see the cornice here that stops and then continues again down here. We can infer that the building was in fact a four-story building with a one-story extension very similar to the Roebling Street original building. And as you'll see in just a minute, our building honors that same massing. So here is the site as it exists and as it has for the last 40 years, 40-plus years. And here's a diagram basically showing you the bulk and height that we are after. As Richard mentioned, we're seeking a height variance of about 25 inches and about additional 1,400 square feet of additional bulk. But I think you can see that it's still very much in keeping with the scale and context of the neighborhood. And in fact, even with the 25-inch height that we're looking for, we still will be shorter than by a bit of what the original building shows here. So here's our proposal, three-story preschool with a rooftop playground and a one-story extension at ground level. It's got five classrooms and a very small amount of administrative area. And as you can see, the building is, it presents itself as wood. And while this may not be the sort of wood jerk material that one would imagine for this context, it really developed after a very long consideration on the part with this context and with this fabric. It's not a gratuitous material in this case. It plays a very, very important role for us in terms of our attention to context of the neighborhood and in terms of how we are trying to embody the ethos of this school. We are very interested in designing a building that's authentic to our time as much as these buildings were authentic to theirs, while still paying very, very close attention to these buildings. Here you see the building from Driggs as a kind of gateway into the Fillmore Place The building is really operating at two scales. On the one hand, we do want to convey an institutional presence. We're a school after all and we are a, we are serving the needs of a community. But on the other hand, we recognize that we sit in a residential context, so we wanted to temper that, to temper that institutional scale through the articulation of the facade to create a sort of domestically scaled identity to the facade. And so you can see it keeps in, or it is in keeping in terms of kind of cadence and rhythm of the block with the buildings that exist. What's really great about the buildings at Fillmore Place is that they create a great fabric. There's no one building that really stands out. This is not a Brooklyn Heights or a sort of Ford Green Historic District with stately sort of very well-preserved homes. It's a much, much more dynamic fabric. As I said, it's a sort of scrapier fabric and in so, I think more accepting of difference. And we wanted to design a building that's very much in dialogue with that fabric. And it does so in ways that may not be immediately evident, but that in fact really does treat scale and detail in a very similar spirit to the neighborhood without trying to sentimentalize or imitate it. Excuse me, we paid great attention to the sort of solid and void relationships in the facade. By solid and void, I mean the equivalent to this sort of window-to-wall relationships of the existing buildings. And the basic organizing dimensions for this facade come from the classroom, come from the actual program of the building. That's our metric. We've broken down this institutional scale using the components that actually make up the classroom. Storage cuppy, chalkboard, pinup board, bench, these are all, these elements that lend a set of sort of domestic, human-scale dimensions to the building. The facade is created by the classroom where the very identity of the building is presented to the world through the classroom. The species of wood that we're, sorry for the color here on the screen, but is Douglas fir. And as you can see here on the right. And as you look at the sort of variation in brick along the neighborhood, you can see that there is first of all a very great variation in color and texture of brick in the neighborhood. And the same variation in warmth and tone of the Doug fir, we think creates a very sympathetic resonance with the block, but also then by creating a very, very different feel than a conventional commercial building envelope would provide. The natural attributes of wood are as important for the sense of warmth that we believe the building will bring to the neighborhood as they are for what they'll bring to the learning environment of the classroom. From a human standpoint, wood in architecture provides a connection to nature, improves a sense of well-being both indoors and outdoors. It's essential to a sense of belonging. And again, we're using it where colder, more sort of industrial or commercially associated materials like aluminum or steel would otherwise be used. And we're doing that again in order to bring a more residential warmth and scale to the So here you see the building looking along Fillmore towards Driggs. Again, presenting it in that kind of end-block face, and again, I'm sorry, you can't see it probably very well on this slide, but the sort of very different character of the end-block building here versus the mid-block buildings is a very similar context. At street level, we're taking our cues again from the existing building. The original building had a storefront that faced Driggs and then turned to Fillmore Place. And we will do the same. Those components that were sort of scaled to the classrooms, at this point at street level, what we want to do is scale those components to the street, turn them around to face the street and become a kind of advertisement almost by, as a curated synopsis of what's going on in the school. Same goes for the entry to our school. You can see the residential entry to this building was on Fillmore Place and we'll do the same for the school. And it will be identified by this deep wood screen that will be on either side of it, which helps differentiate the public lobby of the building from the classrooms on either side of it.
Can you speak about the Driggs Avenue foundation?
Yeah, I will get to that in a second, thanks. The school's program is based on a regio lamiya philosophy of early childhood development. I don't know if any of you are aware of this philosophy. It developed in post-World War II Italy. And there are really many very wonderful themes in this pedagogy. But one of the most exciting and important for us is the statement that environment is the third teacher. Parents are first, professional educators are second, but a child's relationship to her physical world is third. And given that environment is so critical to the way that children learn in this program and being that we're in New York City, we feel very strongly that we need to bring the city into the classroom, while at the same time we're bringing the classroom to the city. We want this historic neighborhood to be part of the, to be present in the school and to be part of the learning environment and the teaching environment of the school. But at the same time, we want that activity to be visible, to be a sort of visible presence in the community. We're our school, we're helping to build a very community that we're part of, and so we want to be a visible, vibrant and accessible component of that community. We will have a rooftop play area and I know that there have been concerns expressed by the community about the noise that will possibly emanate from here. I just want to try to reassure you that the play area is a very modest size, it can only accommodate no more than 18 preschoolers. And as you can see, it has a very, very tall parapet wall, half of it being completely solid and the other half being a kind of steel mesh that I can show you that I think will keep the noise very much to a minimum. Now here is, in response to your question about the Driggs face, the other material that we're using in the building is brick. And brick in this case, or in the way that we're trying to use it, is really a kind of background or almost a kind of bridge material for us. We're proposing a very neutral gray brick. And we're using it on either end of the building primarily to prevent that kind of glass box feel to the building. It ties the building in with its context for obvious reasons, but with, again, without trying to mimic it. And on the Driggs facade, this is actually an egress stair. It helps to narrow the perception of, oops, excuse me, narrow the perception of the building and also maintain a three-bay window structure to the building, which is what the entire historic district is broken up into. The main facade on Fillmore Place faces north, so there will be very, very little direct sunlight on that facade. It will see some very early morning sun in the summertime and the Driggs facade will see some late afternoon direct sun. We are using low iron glass and between that and the fact that this will see very little direct sunlight, reflective will be kept to a minimum. This is just, this is July 21st at 9:00 AM, 2:00 PM, 5:00 PM, 7:00 PM. These look much better on my screen than they do here, but I promise you that. Side components, I guess the most important thing to talk about with this slide is simply that there will be no aluminum caps on the glass. It is a structural silicone glass. You can see the fascia is also wood. The mullions are 16 inches deep. They're Doug fir timber mullions and they serve then as this kind of structure to support the classroom elements. The spandrel glass at the top has a wood veneer behind the glass and then the metal mesh screen fills the open bays that are part of the play area. Here you see a detailed building section and the relationship of the wood to the glass here is closer up. You can see the kind of metal curb detail that we've developed here, something that I didn't talk about earlier, but in fact frames the entire glass facade. It becomes a kind of inside corner detail at Fillmore-Driggs intersection and then also comes over top and packs the building as a kind of cornice element, a very flat blade and also runs through the brick on the Fillmore face. You see an upper-level room. And then in terms of precedents, wood is really undergoing a renaissance, is a 21st century building material and building system. As these precedents hopefully show, there is a real push to expand wood's role as a very versatile and sustainable structural system for taller buildings, for mid-rise buildings, buildings that were not accustomed to seeing wood built in. That's basically because of many high-performance qualities that wood provides both structurally and sustainably and again because of the sense of nature it brings to buildings that wouldn't otherwise have that. This maybe the great example is recently completed Statement to Library in Staten Island by Andrew Berman Architects. You can see it continues with residential construction and makes a reconstruction. That's Doug fir timber as the facade. Gymnasium in the UK. Building, a university building in China. I can go through planned elevation sections if you like or I can zip through these.
I think that's fine if you don't build some of your plans.
Sure.
Do we take questions, Margaret?
Can you just go back to the elevation on Driggs, please?
Great, okay. So the first, I'm just kind of listening to your discussion about the neighborhood and you described for one, your building as being warm and you just, because the materials, wood materials are warm. And you also described this section here of being sort of the tripartite window system that's consistent with a tripartite window system found elsewhere in the district. But I'm curious, first of all, what's the width of this frontage?
21 feet.
So, okay, so when you talk about the tripartite window system, isn't that usually found within the 21 feet?
That's true.
So what you're doing is you're collecting it in a way that's atypical.
Correct.
So that's the first. And the second is the light gray brick, which in your renderings of course reads white, but, okay, is an atypical material for the neighborhood. And I'm curious how you came to that conclusion if you want the building to feel warm. I understand why you wouldn't want the staircase to read as glass.
Yeah.
Because you seem to be form-following-function type design. So could you just talk about that?
Sure, they're very good questions. And I will say that the impulse to use that brick there in that way was more strongly towards trying to make a more slender face of the kind of glass and wood component of the building on the Driggs side. And the idea of the color of the brick has been of great contention in our office and among every sort of player on the team. We could certainly We could certainly consider and have considered more, a brick that is more in keeping, you know, a red brick, it's more in keeping with the neighborhood. For us, it became an issue of which red, how red. So the idea of sort of neutralizing that brick became the way for us to be able to rationalize a kind of initial use of it. So I think that we're very open actually to rethinking the nature of that particular material.
And just one more question. In terms of the section that you show of the relationship of the casework to the windows, to the glass, have you looked at how you're actually going to maintain behind the casework?
Yes, very carefully from day one. The panels, in fact, we are developing a system where they actually can just hinge open in order to be able to clean the glass. The cabinets themselves, we are, we're still sort of calibrating that distance, but we're trying to find the distance where it is, it is close enough to the glass that it reads as the facade of the building while you're still able to get behind it and clean the glass, clean what's behind it. It also, I mean, all of these things are to some degree removable. I don't, we are not talking about, you know, on a weekly or even yearly basis, sort of shifting these things around, but it is conceivable that they could be changed out. The system is meant to be sort of component-based.
Just adding to that, because you said that they're flexible, part of the rhythm that you have in the facade is driven by these vertical members.
Correct.
And so how would you respond to the fact that if they're, over time, can change, it will in fact perhaps create a different pattern?
Yeah.
Which in fact is not based on your very interesting analysis of the rhythm.
And agreed, it's been a long discussion with the director and ourselves. What we've done is created basically equal amounts of each component for each classroom. So the way that it's configured is always pretty much the same as components, but just, you know, slightly changed around. Part of the reason, part of the thinking behind this is at ground level, the main concern is protecting the privacy of the kids. So it's a much, much more sort of opaque composition at ground level. And at the upper level, there's slightly more freedom in terms of how we both vary those things and how we maintain a certain sense of privacy.
Please state your name, and if you can come forward.
Brian Lederfield. I'm the owner, job on the job. So the conclusion we've come to is that the way these are configured is actually more based on site lines. So the different head of each classroom based on particular privacy needs. And then obviously, certain components being switched, you know, into different bays doesn't affect the actual programmatic requirements of the classroom.
But the vertical base will then?
There's been...
The vertical base will remain then, or, okay?
Yeah, this is not going to change. This is not going to be sort of a mix-and-match system where every, you know, six months all components change. In terms of the aesthetic and the rhythm and all of that, the mutability of it is more to access classroom evening and to be able to choreograph each space depending on its site context and site model, not so teachers can play around.
Thank you. Michael, yes, go ahead.
I have two questions, if I may. One, sort of technical, and the other, a little more philosophical, I guess. What are you going to be using as a treatment for the dug fur to keep it from bleaching under ultraviolet exposure so that we don't have a completely different colored building in five years? And two, you mentioned, I'm intrigued about the use of wood here, but this is essentially a masonry neighborhood, and you mentioned that you were trying to maintain the context of the neighborhood by using wood. How does this do that?
Well, as I said, first question first. We will have UV coatings, a very high-performance UV coating on the glass. The wood also, the finish, the clear finish that we put on wood, we'll have UV coating on that.
That will be maintained.
That will have to be maintained. I mean, UV coating on the glass certainly will. And I think that they are at levels now where you can be really very self-assured about its longevity. In terms of wood versus masonry, we just feel very, very strongly that this idea of imitating through material similarities does not make an appropriate building, a necessary end result. We actually spent a very good part of our initial design phase looking at this building as a brick building, and it got us nowhere. We felt very, very, we just, we felt like all we were doing was diluting the context that we were trying to be part of. We were confusing the fabric that was there. It lost its authenticity, it lost its originality. So we felt that we could find a way to maintain, again, the character of that place, the kind of sense that the original building brought to that place, and the way that people thought about how those buildings on those corners developed, but with a 21st century mindset. So we feel very strongly that we've held true to those principles.
Are there any other questions? Yes, Roberta?
No, I think my question was answered. I was just going to ask about the wood and the context.
All right, we did receive the community board's recommendations. The committee does not actually support the project and voted unanimously to reject it. Their reasoning, I'm just going to sum it up, is that the proposed building is not contextual with the surrounding properties that can be found within the designated historic district. All right, we can move to public hearing. We have three speakers on this item. Barbara Z. Each person will be given three minutes, and the timer will go off, and please respect that. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Barbara Z. of the Historic District Council, and on behalf of everyone at HDC, I'd like to welcome you into your new position. We will look forward to working with you. So when the Fillmore Place Historic District was designated back in 2009, HDC was delighted that this small but historically intact section of Williamsburg would be protected from the rapid change the neighborhood has experienced in the past decade. While HDC finds the height and bulk of the proposed new building at Two Fillmore Place to be reasonable, we could not help but notice that the building seems to better reflect the buildings being constructed elsewhere in Williamsburg rather than the context of the historic district. There is no precedent in the district for the use of clear-finished wood, and the high quantity of glass is incongruous with the rest of the block. This proposal seems to be a missed opportunity to work within the district's existing palette, which is predominantly masonry with elegant storefronts along Driggs Avenue. HDC asks that extra care be taken with proposals in the Fillmore Place Historic District, which provides a crucial glimpse into the history of this part of Brooklyn. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker, Rhonda West.
Chair of the class, the chair of the commission, the vice president of the preservation and the relations at the smart society. MAS is a private non-profit membership organization that fights intelligent urban planning, design, and preservation of education dialogue and avenues. On June 5th, Kristoff Finio Architecture presented their proposal to the MAS Preservation Committee regarding construction of the nursery school at Two Fillmore Place located within the Fillmore Place's district. After the meeting, the architects refined certain aspects of their design. The architects made great efforts to form a bridge between the small district and Driggs Avenue to join the 19th century with the 21st. Accentuating Two Fillmore Place's potential to serve as a gateway to the district, the architects mimicked the massing of the original building and took architectural cues from the historic fabric. The committee finds the bulk appropriate and appreciates the care that the team took in determining the building's configuration. We support the use of modern materials, often endorsing glass, as you know, whose transparency in this case nicely exposes the interior's activities. At our presentation, the committee was concerned about some unresolved issues which we believe needed clarification, including lack of images showing the reflectivity of the glass facade, understanding the effect of the use of wood, and possibilities of visually fragmenting the plane of the facade, the use of white brick on the east and west facades, and the lack of transition between the sidewalk and the building. Subsequently, the architects submitted images that clarified the reflectivity of the glass and the color context for the wood, details of operable windows which break the plane of the glass at random intervals, and detailing of the ground floor with a wood screen and school art that suggests retail frontage, along with details of the metal band that serves to transition the sidewalk and the glass facade. We think that instead of the white brick, the architects should consider an alternate material more in keeping with the historic palette of the surrounding buildings as well as further detailing of the metal base strip, both of which will result in a project we believe appropriate to its location. We appreciate the opportunity to comment and hope our remarks are useful to the Landmarks Commission as well as the team.
Thank you. The next speaker, Nancy West. West.
I hope you could hear me. I'm here on behalf of the Fillmore Place Historic District Association, and we are an expanding group of residents of the Fillmore District, which encompasses Fillmore Place itself and the intersecting portion of Driggs Avenue on both sides of Driggs. As a member of the Williamsburg-Greenpoint Historic Association, I participated in the research and outreach that resulted in the blocks being designated a landmark district in the first place. I also researched the Henry Miller House in the district, and I'm a visual arts professional and an art historian. Those of us who live in Fillmore and worked on its behalf care deeply about preserving the charm of streets that author Henry Miller referred to as "the most magical place in his childhood universe." The area's charm and simplicity have become even more precious because of the overwhelming changes in the Williamsburg neighborhood, most of them guilty of aesthetic brutality. The position that the school under discussion will occupy within the district makes it vitally important that it be done in a way that preserves the visual harmony and enhances the existing cohesiveness of the district. The new building will sit at the very cornerstone of Fillmore Place in a location that connects the two streets and both sides of the streets. Anything done on this site must enhance continuity and will also set a visual precedent for the development of other properties within the district in the future. While we appreciate that effort has been made in the current design, we feel that it completely misses the contextual mark. Of concern are the colors and materials proposed, natural wood, glass, gray brick, and white brick. It's hard to see how these will meld with any of the other structures in the vicinity, which are predominantly and emphatically brick. Color studies should be considered. We see little visual reference in the design of the school to anything else in the district, rhythm of windows, cornices, stoops, et cetera. It is not a question of slavish recreation versus modern design, but one of being part of an ensemble, an important and central part. This seems to us to be the reason for having the district and similar districts in the first place. The harmony and consistency of the architecture in spite of changes that have been made are what made Fillmore a district in the first place, and anything done should emphasize that or be a change in that direction. Our other design concerns are the wall surrounding the open play yard, which will make the structure taller than the other buildings on the block and further disrupt the rhythm of the assembly of buildings. The floor-to-floor ratio as designed contributes to this and could be reconsidered. We also, the materials, due to the materials used, we need reassurance about acoustics.
I'm sorry, your time is up?
Maybe one final point.
Okay.
Finally, we feel this entire hearing is premature since the design for the school as it stands depends on the granting of a variance via the BSA hearing process. A height variance, even for a few feet, will set a terrible precedent for our district, for Williamsburg itself, and for other historic districts and neighborhoods in the current rapacious development market. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, the applicants want to respond? Do you'd like to respond to any of the?
Well, I did want to respond to the use of wood. One of the things I didn't mention in terms of describing the existing fabric is that there is in fact significant use of wood in the existing buildings. Most, if not all, of the cornices were elaborate wood structures. The windows themselves are wood. And in fact, one of the ways that we were thinking about this idea of the building was sort of the idea of taking one of these wood-framed windows of Fillmore Place and sort of expanding it to a 21st century idea of a wood frame, or just sort of extending the idea of that portal. All of the entry doors were wood originally. So again, it's just, it's not without precedent. In terms of mass and bulk, again, I want to remind everyone that the building that we are designing here originally had very different characteristics than the mid-block buildings, and intends to do so now, but to be in keeping with the sort of nature and context of the site that it's on. And in terms of, so in terms of that BSA variance, I think that we are asking for very, very reasonable changes. And last, I guess, the idea of the play area, again, I feel, you know, these are very small children, and it's a very, very small play area raised fairly high above the street level.
Okay, any questions? Any questions? All right, we can move to discussion. All right, I just want to say a few things and then ask for some opinions here. I think that there's certain aspects about this site and it being developed which will, I believe, be very critical and important for the historic district. It's been a vacant lot for a long time, over forty years. The idea that it's being developed actually, I believe, will enhance the district. And I think in general, leaving us on some minor details, I think that generally the bulk of the building actually fits in quite nicely with the existing context. And while it may be taller than the building across the street, and slightly taller than the one that's adjacent to it on Driggs, the height, I think, it still does not detract from the general forms of the district. It seems some of the issues then we've heard today in terms of testimony really have to do with the materials themselves, and particularly the combination of glass and of wood in a district which is largely brick, and then also the color of the brick on Driggs Avenue as well as at the rear, which is of a white color versus the palette, which seems to be more in the range of red and amber. And I think those are areas that they probably could work on, but let me hear what the other commissioners have to say. Fred, you want to go first?
Sure. I'll be too.
I think this is a very interesting, really a marvelous way to start the new era with the new chair. It's very interesting. It kind of sums up so many of the things that we talk about around this table, particularly when we're adding new to old. In this case, a new building to, a whole new building in a historic district is not an everyday occurrence, even though it's the first agenda item on your entire era.
I should be lucky.
To me, it's a wonderful project, and I like it very much in many ways. You know, and so often, our understanding of context is in the eye of the beholder. And I so appreciated the public testimony. I felt all of it was incredibly articulate and useful. But this idea of context, you know, you come down on one side or the other of it often, and I guess I'm on one of those sides often and not on the replication side. And so I think this example of a contemporary building whose bulk being asked for, by the way, height and bulk, seems completely appropriate to me, that it fits in extraordinarily well, rounding, ending this block at the corner appropriately. So I'm thrilled by the use of new materials, not aggressive use of glass, but a very sensitive use of glass. I think the backup of wood, I don't really buy the idea that wood is all over the place in the context. I mean, you don't really see it. It's painted. This is a different kind of product and a different use of it, but it does have a color saturated quality that mimics the color or starts to mimic the color of some of the brick coloration. My issues, and they're really pretty minor, they've been alluded to in the testimony and probably will be around the table. I think, I support the idea of this bookending of the brick wall. I think it could have a window in it, but I'm not sure it needs to. I think it kind of stops the rhythm of the rest of the block and starts to make the corner. I think that's probably a good thing. But I'm really not sure about this color. I think maybe the color is slightly out of context, and maybe a more, a brick that's in the red family might work really well. And the other part is shown very well on this slide that's up. I think the lack of a... I think the lack of a ground base is a technical, functional problem for you ultimately over time, but I think it's a problem for us around this table, too. I think it just, it doesn't produce the context. It needs to come up. It needs to have a, you know, it's almost drawn there, that part that where you see under the feet needs to just be raised. So all in all, I think it's a great building with the few details that need to be worked out.
Other comments? Marjorie?
I think, yeah, I think it's actually a very beautiful project. I appreciate this pursuit of new materials just in general from a contemporary architecture perspective. For me, I do actually find it a contextual building. Not only do I buy that wood is a material in the district, which in fact it is, it's painted, but we know that those things are wood, but in addition, the old storefronts, actually best described with that old tax photo of the Minerva Toy Company, actually for me is the springing board for the entire design. If you just look at the grid that was on that storefront, it's almost the same proportions as the grid that's used in this building. And kind of to just pick up on what Fred said, sort of proof of why you actually need to have more of a lift and more of a setback underneath the lift is that storefront, which sort of hangs there in this very elegant way, and I think would actually help this building feel not so kind of dropped there in a way that none of the other buildings are dropped. The other thing in terms of just sort of grids is that this is an area of firescapes, and so you also have the grids of firescapes. I don't know if these buildings had T-porches, but that's something certainly typical in neighborhoods of this time period. In addition, the activity on the facade of all of these different changes, to me, recalls this idea of the open and partly open double-hung windows, which have a lot of activity in them, and actually, that's rather wonderful to encourage the activity, not with just air conditioners like we see in a lot of the pictures, but with the variety of open and closed. And even speaks to what the architect described as sort of the scrappiness in the neighborhood, so there's variety, but it's not predictable. And but with my, so my only other concern besides the height of the bulkhead is this blank, light-colored wall. For me, the, when I look at where the blanks are on the side buildings, they're not on the short elevation, they're always on the long elevation, so the blank is very atypical for disrelationship to the adjoining property. The other issue about the blank for me is that there's only one building left on Driggs Avenue that's still in the district, and by having that blank section there, it's like it's isolating that one building, and you don't even realize that it's part of the district anymore. So I think that, I'm not saying that brick is the right way to go. I'm thinking instead that you really need to look at how to take that one section and use it as a way to integrate to the other building. I don't know what the material is. I don't think it's just a simple blank wall. And I have a similar problem with the blank wall that you see when you're standing on Fillmore. It's atypical to see a finished brick like that. There are other ways of treating. Actually, you should look at what happens with this kind of tall corner building and a low building adjacent. You always see a much more finished wall with more activity on there, so I think that's what needs to be looked at.
Yes, Dana?
Yeah, thank you. I think that the overall design, the mass and the bulk and the volume of the glass is fine. I also find that the white brick does not create a bridge and is not neutral in this context and really needs to be dealt with. I think that the use of the wood, I actually, I do like it, but I think that perhaps in this case, it could be more effective in the context if, because if it were more decorative or more subsidiary perhaps to masonry, and that there might be a combination of using some of the really nice features of the brick and at the same time being able to have some more connection through use of brick or masonry. And I agree with the comments of Commissioner Bryant about the base. Thank you.
Any other comments? Yes, Michael? Mike, when the mic?
I think it's, I think it's a really beautiful project, and I agree with many of the comments already made. I'll add to it only a few things. I think that the scheme is very interesting, but I'm a little bit concerned about some aspects of it, not to the extent that I think that those concerns would render it inappropriate, but just to throw it out there and see what people think of it. First of all, the contextual claim, the principal contextual claim is that the wood, or one of the principal contextual claims is that the wood color will relate to the brick on the block in a kind of a new mode. I am concerned, as Michael raised the point earlier, about the performance of the wood over time, and I think that the applicant should work with the staff to verify that what is today a brown building will not in five years be a gray building, which I think would change its character significantly. The second thing that I wanted to raise was, I kind of was having dueling thoughts on the rendering of the main facade of the building, the Fillmore Place facade. In my experience, most butt-jointed glass buildings, even if they have stuff going on relatively close to the glass behind them, read obliquely as flat, severe, single, plain, hard structures. And this building, 100% of it, or 99% of its texture is behind the glass. So what you, if the reflectivity studies that are shown are in any way inaccurate, what you're going to have when you look down that street is a very different image from what is shown now. Instead of a very variegated, very active, very deep facade, what you're going to have is a very flat, very regular, very hard facade. And so, part of me says, well, that's completely inappropriate. But on the other hand, I say, well, you know, these side buildings, as we've seen from the examples, are more or less flat and do take on a characteristic that is different from the mid-block buildings, where sideness for a building of this nature is more blank than the front. So that kind of mitigates it for me, but still, I feel like if there were the possibility of integrating some depth and texture that could mitigate that flatness and regularity or translate the interior depth and interest, which is a common parallel to the kind of detail that we used to see in older buildings, to the facade, so that when you're viewing it down the block, similar to the entrance here, there is a little depth, similar to the reveal at the base, similar to the opening at the top, if there were some way to kind of create some depth out of that that could read in three dimensions, I think it would enhance the building and its relationship with the block. I think the massing is appropriate. I think the idea about the brick is right on.
Thank you. Michael, do you want to add anything? Yes.
I share mildly those concerns, but fundamentally, I think what we need to look at is whether this is an enhancement to this district, and I think it most definitely is. It's a departure. There may be some, you know, frankly, right-built houses and they leaked. You don't know sometimes until the doggone things are erected. So in general, I feel very good about this building. I also wanted to put a word in in favor of the brick that's been chosen. I think that using a red brick would be almost gratuitous in a sort of pastiche kind of way, and I think the transition that this particular brick makes from the other masonry in the neighborhood is spot on, and I'm very much in approval of this.
Okay, any other questions? Yes, Roberta?
Okay, I wanted to really say that I, at first, really thought that the use of the wood somehow wasn't as an appropriate material for this particular new building in this little, small area. And I guess, and because I really want to look at the building in terms of what does the building bring to the district, it was really, it's hard to see on first glance how that wood is appropriate. At least, I had trouble seeing that. And I think probably I'm more convinced by something that Commissioner Perlmutter said in terms of relating it to other wood used in the district, which I'm surprised that the architect, the presenter didn't mention, makes wood a possible choice. And so I guess for me, it's just maybe a question more of hues and colors and somehow having the warmth of the building in terms of what you see when you look at it reflect what's in the district than a question of the materials, if that makes sense. And so that discussion about keeping the color of the color that we see now is important because while the material is different, I think that when you look at the elevation, that the elevation itself gives you the idea that it's contextual in hues and somehow that it's, it seems a part of the neighborhood that way. So I think that that should be, like, looked at, how the wood changes, how it doesn't. And the same thing with the glass that was discussed before, making sure that you don't see just glass.
Okay, thank you. All right, it seems that, I just wanted to add one thing more to what I'd laid out initially. I would agree with some of my fellow commissioners that a response of modern material with this shape and form, I think, can be appropriate. I think that the combination of glass and wood we've seen in other districts, and they've worked well. I think that, again, that its location sets it apart from where the heart of the district was, so this variation, I think, will not detract from that. So in sum, it seems that what we'd like them to do is come back and work on certain areas. It seems that the general massing, I think, has got support from all the commissioners. I think the areas that they should look at are, just on the Driggs facade, the issue of color and articulation. I would agree with Marjorie on the fact that this is an important piece in terms of a transition, and it does sort of leave out one adjacent building, and it seems like that's the end of the district. How it should be articulated, I think the architects should look at that. I think the color, even though my colleague, Commissioner Devonshire, may somewhat disagree in terms of the color, you can look at a color that is more in keeping, both for the portion on Driggs as well as at the rear. And if I can sum up the last point, which is about the base of the building itself, and making that more reflective of the materials or the treatment of the base of other buildings in the district. In terms of the gray brick that you're looking at right now, at least when you come back and you can show us an alternative, we have the ability to look at both together and see what would make the most sense, given that, you know, that this is an unusual and I think actually very attractive building here, and that it may in fact work better with the original color that you're looking at. Did I cover all points? Okay, that's good. Yes. All right, motion to close the hearing?
Yes, second.
Yes, okay. Motion to close the hearing, second? Yes, okay. All in favor?